Okay. Good evening. We'll call to order the city council meeting for Monday, October 20th, 2025. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which it is in its entirety, on this day, May 25th, 2025, with all due diligence.
Roll call, please.
Mark Bitner.
Here.
Shannon Derby.
Yeah.
Bill Leclerc.
Here.
Tim Petrie.
Here.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Yeah.
Scott Steckmesser.
Here.
Darla Leclerc.
Here.
And Doug Brand and Adam Mahusky are absent.
And they weren't going to dial in tonight, so we can skip over number four and then on to number five, introduction of invited guests. First one is Tracy Coats, representing the American Legion Auxiliary Unit 165.
Well, it's on. Thank you for inviting me. I wrote this out to read it so I stay on track and be succinct. In August 2023, the American Legion Auxiliary National Organization joined forces with Reefs Across America to build a stronger awareness of each group's common missions while supporting fundraising efforts nationwide. Reefs, WAA, is an organization whose mission is to remember our fallen U.S. veterans, honor those who serve, and teach our children the value of freedom. The American Legion Auxiliary has the same. The 2025 Reefs Across America Day is December 13th, the same day as Cool City Christmas. Nevertheless, on that day, more than 2 million reefs will be placed on veterans' graves across local, national, and military cemeteries, as well as veterans' memorials and historic sites. This past spring, our ALA Unit 165, with the permission of the Two Rivers City Parks and Rec Department, has registered the Pioneer Calvary, also known as the Old Cemetery, and Holy Cross Forest View, the New Cemetery, as WAA locations. We are the first in Manawak County to have that done. Actually, in northeast Wisconsin, you'll be hard pressed to find officially registered locations. As designated locations, we will be laying wreaths on the grave markers of veterans at both of the cemeteries. We have been fundraising and will be able to place between 400 and 500, closer to 500 wreaths on December 13th. The Rotary Club of Two Rivers has given us a grant for 150 wreaths and will be participating in wreath placement. We are recruiting volunteers, and that's why I'm here tonight, to implore all of you to encourage your friends and family members to come out. We will be meeting at 10:00 a.m. at Holy Cross Cemetery by the memorial. We've invited all kinds of folks to come and do the eight ceremonial wreath placement first. I definitely, State Rep. Paul Tittle, State Senator Devin Lemahue will be there. Scott has graciously accepted representing the city of Two Rivers. We have our Wisconsin Department Legion Commander and our American Legion Auxiliary President will also be there and laying the eight wreaths that encompass. Let's see, we have the Army, Marines, Navy, Air Force, Space Force, Coast Guard, Merchant Marines, and the POWs and MIA, because you're not only placing out those who have served and passed, but these ceremonial ones also represent those who are serving at this time to honor them as well. We have more than enough money. We are placing wreaths at all the killed in action and missing in action veterans that are buried across both cemeteries. It'll, in a couple of weeks, you'll see, we'll be getting a check from Cool City Brewing Company, who at their Oktoberfest helped us raise money for wreaths, and we will be getting about 250 wreaths from that endeavor. It was over $4,000. So I'm encouraging all of you to come out, bring your kids on your way to Cool City, on your way to see Santa, so you can show them what this is about. We are recruiting, a reefer will be placed nationwide on December 13th at 10:00 a.m. Central Standard Time. So, I mean, it, it, we, it's coordinated, so different time zones. We will start with the eight ceremonial wreaths. Okay, I told you all that stuff. See, that's why I wrote this down. Lay a wreath on, lay a wreath, a remembrance wreath or two, and then head downtown for Cool City. It'll, it'll give you a lot to talk about with your, your kids and your grandkids, especially if you lay one on a relative site, and they'll say, "Why are you doing that?" Thank you.
Tracy, appreciate it.
And thank Mr. Mathis for sending a letter to them so we could register our, our two cemeteries. Any, oh, any questions?
Thank you for what you're doing. It's a good program.
You're welcome. It was a lot more work than I anticipated, so, but yeah, I expect press to be there, so, you know, TV cameras and all that good stuff.
Where do we sign up to volunteer?
I beg your pardon?
Where do we sign up to volunteer?
You can sign up on the Reefs Across America website, and our location actually has an ID number, and I wrote that down, so in case you asked. It is WI0106P, and they'll have a, they'll have a sign-up sheet there. Or quite honestly, if you just show up, I will find things for you to do.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, Tracy. Appreciate it. Okay, next scheduled guest, Lisa Schmidt from the Vanderbroe Arboretum Executive Director.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. I also wrote this down. I might go off script, and we'll see how it goes. It's all good. So, as you said, my name is Lisa Schmidt, and I'm honored to serve as the Executive Director of the Vanderbroe Arboretum. And I took over into this role in June, following Founder John DeBro's resignation. But I had been with the Arboretum since September of 2024. I started last year as Development Director. So I've been, my, my background is in journalism and nonprofit development. So for the past decade, I've been working with small and kind of startup nonprofits, building capacity through grants and fundraising. So when I came across the development role, it was a perfect fit for me to jump into. I also have experience with nonprofit leadership and a certificate in leadership management. So when John was resigning, it was a perfect role for me to kind of elevate, you know, my position with the organization and having a lot of background with the Arboretum now. So that was a great fit. So I truly want to put out a thank you to John DeBro for everything he did to create the 65 natural, 65-acre natural sanctuary. He truly put his heart and soul into what he was doing to make that place what it is. And that work continues here at the Arboretum through my leadership and through the leadership of the board and through the volunteers that really stepped up this summer. There's a lot going on down there, and there'll be more going on soon. This is where I went off script. It's already catch up to where I was. I'm also happy to share that through strong collaboration with city staff and thanks to funding from the West Foundation, we have successfully resolved all previous utility challenges at the Propagation Center. So we're moving forward with water, sewer, and electrical to be completed soon. Sewer and water will take a little bit longer. I don't have an exact timeline, but I think electrical could be in the next few weeks. And so with that complete, we're ready to expand our programming, host more volunteer events, and enhance our visitor experiences on site. Let's see. So the Vanderbroe Arboretum, we truly strive to be a community green space, so I see us evolving more to have a lot more involvement from the community and really grow into our space for people to enjoy recreation, art, and nature. So we've had, we have art nodes on the grounds. There has not been art at them, but hopefully that's something everybody will be able to come out and enjoy soon. Let's see. And really, while the foundational work done at the Arboretum has created this space, I also just wanted to recognize that it's now a shared responsibility to continue to create this asset for the community. This isn't something that I can do by myself. It wasn't something that John could ever have done by himself. We all, you know, there are people that stepped up to help him, and there's people stepping up to help me. And everybody is, you know, really, really thankful for all of that. So the Arboretum is more than just restored habitat. It's really a living legacy for the people of Two Rivers. There will be many ways for people to enjoy it, neighbors, volunteers, and businesses to really take advantage of what it has to offer. And so I thank you for your ongoing support, and I look forward to our future.
So when is the Wine Walk?
The Wine Walk was on October 11th. So last, was that just last Saturday? Two Saturdays ago. A lot has happened.
Great event.
Yeah, it, it went really well. We had just over 100 people that attended, so that's what we expected, which is great to have what you expected. It was a little bit more than we expected, so that's perfect. But we are, like I said, working on more events. So I'll be sharing, if you follow us on Facebook, or just go to our website, soon enough, there'll be a link to find those events. My goal is to have a monthly event in the cold months, and then more than monthly, like three or four events, like May through September. So we'll be looking for partnerships with other organizations that can offer, like, you know, educational workshops, guided hikes, things like that. Yeah, yes.
Questions?
But we are lucky enough to have her be speaking at our EAV Winter Education Series at the library, so we're looking forward to that in March.
Yes, April. I think it's in April.
All right.
Thank you so much, and welcome to town. We all love the Arboretum. It's a gem here, and we've had challenges in the past, but you've done a lot of work in a short amount of time getting all that smoothed out, so smooth sailing ahead, and we look forward to working with you.
I agree. Thank you.
I'd like to credit, again publicly, John for his efforts, the hours he has spent on this, his own personal money, his vision, his commitment to make this thing happen. And it really is a real legacy for Two Rivers to have such a facility. Your trail system is unique, handicap accessible, and I encourage anyone in our community to use it, because it's a great place at any time to either see the emergence of pending flowers and beautiful wildlife and natural berries that have long since vacated. They're, they're happening right in our community right now, and walking these trails, don't be surprised to see an abundance of wildlife, deer, birds, and beautiful flowers and natural vegetation that isn't always available to our community. So thank you for what you're doing. I appreciate it and encourage everyone in this community to take advantage of this wonderful resource.
Yes, I agree. I love seeing the cranes that walk their property, and my husband recently made a comment, "Is that why you're so much happier these days? Because, because I'm at the Arboretum immersed in nature more regularly than I was before I took this role." So it's a great way to just find a mental balance. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes.
And then, Mr. President, if I may, it's not on the agenda tonight, but I would like to introduce a, our newest member of our team, our new Community Development Director, Jeff Socksey is here. Jeff, if you want to come up and introduce yourself to the council. Jeff is a regional economic development professional with a career in workforce development, data analytics, and economic development advising. He's a native of Two Rivers who has returned to his hometown, and he has already hit the ground running. Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, thanks, Council. It's great to see so many familiar faces. Figured I'd stop and say hi since I'm a week on the job. Look forward to coming back, being more frequent present at council, because, as many of you know, I'm a very strong believer in the future of this community, a very strong adherence in place-based economic development, and very bullish on the future of Two Rivers. So looking forward to working with all of you.
Welcome.
Jeff's number one priority is the same as mine, which is to reverse any population decline and get people back here and get shovels in the ground, and let's build some things.
Yeah, you know, again, when I graduated high school in 1995, the city's population was over 13,000. So again, just to give you a sense of the goal that I've set, historically, the city's highest population was about 17,000, or 13,700. So if I can meet or exceed that by the time my career is done, then I have done a great job.
Awesome. Thank you. Sir, appreciate it. Welcome.
At line.
Oh, the line?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Uh, let's see, we could skip over number six. We have no public hearing. Number seven, input from the public. If anyone wants to address the council, you can step up to the podium on your left, state your name and address to the record. I only see two people here, and they've been up talking already, so don't think they want to. So we'll go on to number eight, council, make council communications, letters and other communications from citizens. Anyone have anything? Yes, Shannon?
I have it in my notes. Um, I got an email wondering, or disagreeing, two emails since we've talked about it last, about the paid parking, and they're not in favor of it. And somebody was wondering about if we had an ordinance or a speed limit for electric bikes and scooters, so.
I know we've talked a little bit about the electric, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and they just have to follow the rules of the road, right, for anywhere else? So, okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Yes, Mark?
I received a message, I think all of us did, about Friday night concerts and what we're working on in the budget, and I don't believe the budget has finalized any decisions about that issue, but we encourage input from the community for your thoughts.
Anyone else?
Businesses, you even made a suggestion that, I would think would be more business. I don't understand why they're, they feel bad about that.
I'd like to know how many establishments have live music. You know, I could only think of two, maybe three places that would, isn't guaranteed that I was gonna have it.
I'm sorry, what was that? Darla, would you repeat that, please?
I'd like to know how many establishments actually have live shows.
On Fridays.
Right, and then that way, I mean, then we're talking with people who actually are affected, because I'm with Bill. They bring people in, as far as I'm concerned, as far as what I've seen.
I think it would be a different demographic, too, that might go to a bar for a concert versus going to the park for a concert, you know, just based on the different location. And it's nothing against either or, it's just different.
There's enough interest on this topic, and I've heard compelling arguments on both sides of it. We're on it. Give us a week. One of Jeff's first assignments, this week he's going to be reaching out to all the local establishments in town to introduce himself, if he doesn't already know him. I think you know most of them already, and have these conversations with them. Are they being impacted positively, negatively, Thursday night, Friday night? Do they have live music? If they do, what time does it start? That might be a key part of it. So we'll flesh this all out, get it directly from the horse's mouth, and we'll report to council.
I think based on those decisions, feedback from the community, we'll make our budgetary decisions according to that feedback.
And our perks and rectory. Something else to add?
I would just add one thing, that our plan has been already to kind of draw back on Fridays, probably not doing 10 of them for sure, because sponsorships did not keep up with that. So between the concession stand and sponsorships and for other events, kind of covered the cost of those, but we didn't directly cover the cost for those Friday concerts with sponsorships specifically for those. So our plan was, can I start pulling back on them anyways, just because sponsorships were not keeping up?
Okay. Mike, anyone else? Council Communications.
I got a question. I probably should have asked it when Mike was up here. All right, so we're talking basically just about, about Central Park. What about pulling back on concerts down in Shota Beach?
We want to do more. We'd like to do probably eight of them this year, if we can, instead of six.
Awesome.
Because there, we get sponsorships to cover all the costs, and they're extremely popular.
As long as we got a healthy balance between the park and the Shota Beach.
Balance and all that.
Yeah, because I mean, if we're adding to the Shota Beach and taking away from Central Park, that just, I don't know.
Coordination's important, yeah. On to number nine, council reports from boards, commissions, and committees. Anyone have anything?
Boing.
Gotcha. With reason. Nothing? Okay. Then on to number 10, the consent agenda. Under A, we have minutes of meetings from the Library Board of September 9th, 2025, Personnel and Finance Committee from October 2nd and October 9th, 2025, Advisory Recreation Board from October 8th, 2025, Architectural Control Committee from October 13th, 2025, and the Plan Commission from October 13th, 2025. The recommended action will be a motion to receive and file. Under B, we have department reports. We have police, electric, and safety. The recommended action will be a motion to receive and file. Under C, we have summary of verified bills for September 2025 of $3,653,145.51. The recommended action will be a motion to receive and file. And under D, we have minutes from boards, commissions, and committees with recommendations requiring city council action from the Plan Commission Meeting from October 13th, 2025. That action is to set a public hearing for a request for a conditional use permit for Lake Shore Humane Society located at Columbus Street, parcel number 053-211-102-001.09 in Industrial District I II, submitted by Ace Building Service Incorporated, applicant, and Lake Shore Humane Society owner. The recommended action will be a motion to set the public hearing from Monday, November 3rd, 2025 at 6:00 PM. The recommended action for the entire consent agenda will be a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended. Looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion to, I'm sorry, approve the, um, various act.
Thank you, Bonnie. Do I have a second? Thank you, Shannon. Any council discussion? Yes, Mark?
I just, I would like to read, or I just encourage the citizens of the city to take a look at one report, which I'm amazed at. It's their police department report of their activities, and it overwhelms me every time I read it, about the training, the effort, the commitment to the commit, to the city, the police department provides, the hours of training, preparation, the news of how activities like the Canine Unit actually helped save situations and didn't put our officers' lives at risk, and all the anniversaries and announcements with a very comprehensive listing of any crime statistics. So I encourage you, it's all available on Facebook. If the city wants to learn more about the excellent police department we have, take a look at the city Facebook on the police department.
Awesome. Mark, anyone else? If not, we'll do a voice vote on favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all for that. On to 11, city council formal items. Under A, we have a consideration of a parking lot lease agreement with the Chamber of Montauk County.
Well, this item simply formalizes the current arrangement we have with the Chamber. Their longstanding use of a city-owned property adjacent to their building, just to the north of them. It's a very simple agreement that puts in writing our arrangement. It allows the Chamber to use this parking lot for its operations and visitors, visitors who we welcome to the area. The site is owned by the city, but it's historically been used by the Chamber. The lease is just about maintenance and liability protections. It doesn't really change anything. It just formalizes and protects the city. It does clarify that the Chamber handles lawn care up to the parking lot line just to the north. It's on the screen. And they handle all snow removal. So, it's all existing practice written down to a piece of paper. Thought it would be smart to formalize it. Any questions?
Questions for Kyle? Straightforward. Then we're just looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with, I'll make a motion to approve the unauthorized city manager to sign agreement on behalf of the city for the parking lot.
Thank you, Mark. Do we have a second? Thank you, Bill. Any council discussion? Seeing none, then we'll do a voice vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carried. On to B, consideration of a lease agreement between the City of Two Rivers and Two Rivers Youth Sports for use of one field at Vietnam Veterans Memorial Park.
I'll give a quick introduction on this topic, just for transparency's sake, but then we can table it until next meeting for final vote and action. Reason we're tabling it is because just a few minutes, about 15, 20 minutes before this meeting, we got a redline version with a few recommended changes, minor language changes, no big deal. It doesn't change the spirit of the agreement at all, but enough changes that we should, you know, spend some time with it and put the final document in the packet for final voting next time. What are we talking about? This is a 15-year ground lease for Two Rivers Youth Sports, a growing local nonprofit organization. On the screen there, you'll see the five fields that are at Vietnam Veterans Park. This lease allows the organization to utilize, maintain, and invest heavily in the blue field, which is the small one all the way to the left and at the top at Veterans Park, Vietnam Veterans Park. This agreement is intended to formalize the group's requested stewardship of one of the five fields at this park, and it provides long-term stability for their growing youth athletic programs. So, we'll have more to say on this at the next meeting, but we had a few discussions with this group on different locations they might want to locate to, to find a home for their growing organization. They are looking to find a home base, a headquarters for stability, so they can grow and have a home to invest in. After looking at a few industrial parcels and some other lands around Two Rivers, this seemed to be the best fit. We already have a field. It's in the center of town. We can drive crowds back into the heart of Two Rivers instead of somewhere on the edge. So, it kind of seems like a win-win-win, a win for the city, a win for them, and then a win for all the businesses around there, which we have heard from. They are impacted by these crowds when they're not playing here. So, we're hoping to get there to drive the crowds and their tournaments and their leagues back to the center of TR. We know there is an economic impact that comes with it, and we would be renting for 15 years to them for that one field, and they would maintain and pay for everything, for the most part. So, that's a quick introduction on it, and I guess we can table it for now. Bring it back next time with the final version.
So, then we're just looking for a motion to table to the November 3rd council meeting.
I'll make a motion to table.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Tim. And then we will do a voice vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carried. It is table to the 3rd. On to C, consideration of a ground lease agreement between the City of Two Rivers and Tower Point.
This item outlines a proposed transaction we've been working on for three weeks. This would monetize our existing cell tower lease revenue at the cell tower located on 18th Street. Tower Point acquisitions, they're a reputable national communications infrastructure investment firm. They're ready to acquire our lease on this US Cellular tower. It would be done through a telecommunications easement. The setup allows the city to receive an upfront lump sum payment while maintaining long-term control of the property. We would not be selling them the property. There's no sale of the land itself. That will remain owned by the city. This is just selling the lease, providing, this is selling the lease and providing Tower Point with an easement on the parcel. They would give the City of Two Rivers $305,000 as a one-time payment. We would get that before 2026 begins. And then, looking forward, any future telecom tenants that locate to the tower, they would split that revenue 60%, 40% in our favor perpetually. It's a perpetual ground lease. We give them. In exchange, they will do something that's not being done currently, which is marketing the site, marketing the tower to other telecom providers. They'll get new equipment on there, more revenue for them in the future, and then we get 60% of any of that revenue perpetually. Right now, US Cellular pays TR just under $1,300 per month with a 3% annual escalator. So, over 15 years, that's about $282,000, and they're gonna buy us out of that at $305,000. So, I call that fair, plus the 60% moving forward perpetually. Any questions? Is there anybody else that was interested in the tower? Yes, and that worked to our advantage, and we got up to 305 because of that interest.
How does that affect, why aren't we gonna move some public work stuff out there? We're not doing that anymore. Never mind, then.
Existing tower, right?
It's the existing tower, so that would be no impact. We could still locate all of our stuff there as intended.
And then we still would gain a percentage of CellCon's revenue that they had previously paid us, plus the additional $305,000 we're getting to.
That's right. That's right. And it's more future revenue, so that'll help with 2026 a lot, right? And then future revenue, 60% of anything they locate there. And the one thing that I wasn't aware of until these discussions is right now, there's a bit of risk there that we're holding because it's just US Cellular. And if they ever went away, that's not good. There's a lot of mergers and acquisitions in the telecom world, so if something ever happened with US Cellular leaving the game, maybe we wouldn't recognize any revenue. So, we thought we should monetize and capitalize on this while US Cellular is still alive and well, take advantage of it now.
Yeah, Mark?
If I may add, reading through this, it looks like this is a national organization we're leasing with, probably with many existing customers, and maybe their visibility and their understanding of the marketplace, they may draw incremental customers in addition to US Cellular that we may not be able to achieve ourselves. So, I think this is a good thing.
Else? It's funny.
On page, I can't remember what page. I'm sorry, I haven't, okay, page 90.6, I wasn't sure what that's talking about. Legal entity organizational documents, and I didn't understand who that applied to. I just was curious about it. It's that little chart under point 6.
Well, I can tell you that this agreement has been reviewed by our legal counsel, and they did recommend a couple of language tweaks to it. Those were incorporated into the document. And Weston Dunn has blessed this document in its existing form. Andrew, you're on the phone. Do you see that on 90.6? Can you elaborate on that at all?
Yeah, so, this is a, this is a letter of intent, right? So, it's agreeing to agree. And these are some of the terms of that agreement to agree, which is to say, it's a point 6 in particular saying that they'll, that will provide authority for anything that has an interest in the property, including, it's one of those, you know, not limited to, but including. So, for corporations, it's two types of document that, first, articles of incorporation create the corporation, signed corporate bylaws say how the corporation's gonna be run. And then it's the exact same thing for LLCs, partnerships, limited partnerships, kind of associated, it's the same thing kind of across the board, just saying, to the extent that somebody owns the property or has an interest in the property, rather, we want to make sure that we see these documents so that we know what we're getting ourselves into in buying this lease of the property. Does that make sense?
I'm glad we have lawyers. Thank you, Andrew.
Is this, is this something that we're asking Tower Point to do, or is this something that they're telling us they're gonna do? How they're gonna, does that make sense to you? Because basically, they're buying this property to resell it, aren't they?
Not exactly to resell. This was a negotiation over three weeks. They came in at a much lower price point than this, so we were able to talk them up quite a bit, like 15% higher. We're not selling the land to them. It's kind of like when you buy them, when you go into, you get a mortgage from a bank, and then a week later, the bank turns around and they sell your mortgage to somebody else, and now you're paying that party. It's kind of like that. They're just buying the lease revenue that we're getting, and the future lease revenue that we're getting from US Cellular. We'll still have control of the land.
Okay.
The documents here, the lease requirements, these are things that we're, the city would be providing to them.
Okay, thank you.
Mark?
This agreement allows them to use that tower to secure other customers, too. Is that what we're basically seeing? So, that tower might not be used currently by Cellular, US Cellular, but it may go to additional players that they're aware of that they could solicit, right?
Any other questions? If not, we're looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve and authorize city manager to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Darla. Do we have a second? Aye. Thank you, Bill. Any council discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a voice vote. On favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all for that. On to D, consideration of a vacant land listing contract with White Guard Realtors Cornerstone.
Yeah, so this will authorize the city to formally engage with White Guard on a new endeavor. This is marketing and selling the vacant city-owned property at 18th and Hawthorne, the kind of triangle piece right there. The sign is on that corner for the industrial park, that wooden sign. It's a 1.3 acre slice of land. 1.3 acre is a little small for industry. It's zoned industrial, so we'd have to rezone it moving forward. And it's immediately adjacent to single-family housing, so not very suitable for industrial development. We thought we could put some housing on it, since we already own it. We're gonna list it with White Guard at just under 140K, at 139,900. And the plan is to market the entire 1.3 acre parcel to a builder, a developer, and they can come in and tell us what they would like to build. And I think the city would like to see multifamily housing, duplexes, townhomes, maybe an apartment building. So, we'll see what the market comes back with on that, or listing it for 139.9.
Any question?
Question. There was somebody that was interested in putting a C-store there, and I don't know if there enough, are we gonna, if somebody asks to do that and goes through all of the funding or the state licensing and so forth, are we gonna allow them to do that there? Or are we gonna keep it residential?
I haven't heard anything about a C-store there yet, and I wonder if that party is still kicking the tires around town. I would encourage them to reach out.
I think he owns a store right now.
The bridge?
Was it a gas station? C-store?
Or is it J-Mart?
Union Store, C-store.
Yeah. Isn't it called J-Mart?
I mean, I don't know about a, I don't know if that came with a gas station. I'd rather see housing here than a gas station.
Yeah. Okay. I think that came up a while ago, at one point, but. Any other questions? Yes, Bonnie?
What is the zoning? I know it's industrial zone now, but the properties next door, what is that zoned at?
It's all single-family residential. R was the lowest. Oh, R3.
Okay, I didn't hear that. R what?
R1 on the north and west.
So, we'd be keeping it R3 to be consistent with that block it's on.
Yeah. But whatever goes there, the neighbors have a say, don't they?
Yes.
I mean, I just, I, those, that's a nice corner, and people have been fixing their homes up around there, and I just don't want to see something stupid go there.
Like industry.
What?
Like industry.
Yeah, we get it. Yes, Mark?
I believe, I read this contract. I can't find, because it's a long, extensive contract, but there is, we're giving them the rights to promote this to the market, but isn't there somewhere in the contract that they'll come back with buyers that we do have the right to review who the buyer is and whether or not we want to determine if it does benefit the city or hurts the city?
Yes, we can negotiate with any interested buyers. And one of the things that we wanted to negotiate with that is a two-year, a two-year build time, to make sure whoever wants to buy it from us saves two years to get shovels from the ground.
Or the ability of, hopefully, I agree, I'd like to lean more to residential, multifamily, single-home development. If we find that we've got somebody that we don't think is a suitable buyer for this, are we able to re-steer the direction that Realtors seek a more suitable buyer, or is this an open amendment to pursue anybody in sale?
Yeah, we would have very close discussions with White Guard and...
Hopefully, our close discussions, and we can determine a residential utilization versus a drive-in popcorn stand or something, right?
Other questions? If not, we're looking for a motion, then.
I'll make a motion to approve and authorize city manager to sign the contract on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Darla. Do we have a second?
Do a second, Doc.
Thank you, Shannon. Any council discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a voice vote again. On favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carried. On to E, consideration of a fleet refueling contract with QuickTrip.
This item establishes a new fuel supply partnership for the city's fleet operations beginning on December 1st, December 1st. For the first time since 2006, the city has bid out its municipal fuel contract. It covers about 32,000 gallons of gasoline each year. The goal, of course, is to secure the best possible price for taxpayers in a contract that was long overdue for bidding. We sent the bidding request out to every local gas station in Two Rivers, even though we knew some of them were not open 24 hours a day, and that was kind of a thing that we needed. But we invited all of them to bid. We had three local gas stations submit bids, with QuickTrip offering the most competitive price with an offer of 12 cents off per gallon. Currently, the existing practice is 0 cents off per gallon. So, that's a step in the right direction. Should save about $3,500 per year. Small, but a lot of these smaller wins are adding up to a big dollar amount. So, when bidding this, it was important to have access to a gas station that's open 24 hours a day. And that's about it. One change compared to what's in front of you, the contract says a start date of January 1st. We were hoping to move that up to December 1st. So, if anybody's gonna make a motion to approve this, if it could include modifying the start date from January 1 to December 1 of 2025, that would be appreciated.
Questions? Yes, Mark?
I talked to Kyle earlier, and I love the idea that we can save money by channeling to a specific vendor. I also appreciate the reality by channeling a vendor, we're not forcing our city staff to drive around and seek the lowest price. But I'd like further reassurance of that the... decision that we've made or we're going to make is based on a discount of twelve cents. If the price of the product, regardless of where it is located in the city, is consistently lower than the price that is relevant to the history of Two River, or QuickTrip, then the city's not gaining anything. What we're forcing, perhaps artificially inflated end price, even though they have a bigger discount of twelve. So how are we assured that their regular listed market price is the most competitive in advertions? We know they've got the highest bid, but how do we know that's the fact?
I think we can keep an eye on it. This is not a long-term marriage. It's pretty easy to get out of this with thirty days' notice. We can keep an eye on it if it ever feels like they're, they're jacking up prices to make the twelve cent discount or the twelve, you know, cent per gallon discount go away. If we see any maybe games being played or the discount being, you know, like a shell game where we're not seeing it. I mean, it's, we can, we can give them thirty-day notice and we can leave this, and we can leave QuickTrip.
From his perspective, the contract is guaranteed that the retail price is if they're trying to bump up the price on the city of Two Rivers, the municipality, they would also be opening up the price on everybody who gets gas there.
And I, I did recognize, and based on, I wanted to research a little further. I did a quick survey of local gas stations, and I find that right now for a regular product and premium too, QuickTrip is higher, in some cases substantially higher my other competitive gas, our other gas stations located in our city. Now, and I, even as an example, two ninety-nine in regular, factoring in twelve percent, twelve cent savings is two eighty-seven, yet there's some stations in town at two sixty-seven. So what I want to make sure is that we're always acting in the best interest of the city, saving the money. And I think, Kyle, you did further investigation into that fact, and you want to share that?
Yes, thanks for pushing me on that this afternoon. So there is a, today is a substantial difference between BP, for example, and QuickTrip. What is going on? Why? So the reason was because QuickTrip just switched to their winter blend today, and BP has not yet. So I think that cleared up why there's a thirty-four cent difference right now. Hopefully. And if it looks like that's a bad trend, we can always leave them and do something different.
But therefore, I like the idea we watch them, monitor it, because a twelve percent initially discount off of their posted price may not be the most favorable for the city. So I think we have to monitor it further on to make sure we're still getting a good buy for the community's interests.
The way they report back to us with a monthly report, that will make it easy for us to keep an eye on it with their monthly data they give us.
Any other questions? I did notice in the weather, weather from, does someone else have a question? I'm sorry. No, um, there, it mentioned something about removing federal taxes of twenty-four point four cents a gallon on diesel and eighteen point four cents per gallon on gasoline. How does that filter in then? Oh, it's not just twelve cents, if it's?
The taxes get removed, and then it's twelve cents off also.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve and authorize the city manager to sign the contract with the change of January first to December first on behalf of the city.
Darla, second by? Tim, thank you. Any council discussion? Seeing none, we will do a voice vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all for that. On to twelve, city managers' report.
I have a few items. I'll make a brief. Halloween is coming up with Two Rivers trick-or-treating on Halloween Day this year. It is on a Friday, October thirty-first, from four thirty until seven. A few days before that, if kids want to go trick-or-treating, they have another shot for wearing costumes and collecting candy as Two Rivers Main Street has downtown trick-or-treating on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, starting at eleven in the morning. That goes from eleven until two on October twenty-fifth for Main Street trick-or-treating. We're preparing for winter. Winter is coming. We're looking to hire a few more part-time snowplow drivers, if anybody is watching. Starting pay is just over twenty dollars an hour, and you have to have a Class B C D L license. So please tell your friends and family if you know anybody that can handle snow plows. And we're in budget season now. We're budgeting, we're making hard choices. We're trying to find money where we can to fund what we need to fund and figure out what we should possibly reduce for next year. So we are seeking public input on a variety of programs and services that we currently provide. It's not a legally binding referenda, it's not a scientific poll, it's just a quick public opinion poll. We've got about three hundred responses over the weekend. Some of them might be non-residents, that is true. This is simply one more public engagement tool that we can rely on for general, which way is the wind blowing? It's kind of like going to a barbecue and talking to people in the backyard. You get a good sense of how everybody's feeling and where, where things are, where things are going. So we appreciate the three hundred or so participants so far. We're still listening, so please keep sending your feedback in. The November hard copy newsletter that will hit mailboxes in a couple of weeks, in the next couple of weeks, will include an invitation to participate in this. We have paper versions ready to go at City Hall, Senior Center, Community House, and the fire station twenty-four hours a day. So I think pretty much everybody has access to tell us how they're feeling on these issues that we're looking at. Thank you.
You. Yes, Mark?
And I could add, in the opportunity to personally attend in the upcoming budget sessions that we're reviewing, and we're not finalizing anything during these sessions, but we're reviewing and listening to the individual apartments. So citizens can be participants in that.
Okay, on to thirteen for information only. We have a city council work session on Monday, October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, at six o'clock P M. We have a city council regular meeting from Mon, on Monday, November third, twenty twenty-five, at six o'clock P M. And a city council listening session for Thursday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, at six o'clock P M. Is that at the senior center, I'm assuming? Do we have a place for that?
You had it last time.
Okay, Costco room.
Costco room.
Perfect. Okay. Other than that, we're looking for a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Second by Tim. Any council discussions? If not, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried, and good night.